This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vator City Council. It is 6:02 PM on Thursday, May 12, 2022.
Jason Dale.
Mr. Daley is working tonight.
Randy Hall.
Here.
And McIntosh here.
That lovely.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Shai.
Also here. What's your lead?
Lovely. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the states of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Mayor's report. The Warden Park Playground, as everyone has probably noticed, is open for play as of May Day morning, and we've seen lots of use. It's very exciting. We still have some projects left to complete out there. The fencing, which we're gonna get moving tonight hopefully, finishing up some landscaping with some filters and whatnot, some grass seed to fix all the bare dirt out there. Covered shelters, signage, and some cable. So, I'm working on all of that. McMurphy Park, there was another RCO grant application, which is what we used for Warden Park, is being prepared for a covered pavilion and some permanent vault toilets down there at the other park. So I think there's gonna be a presentation for council at the next meeting regarding that. Parks Board is sponsoring a free document trading event on May 21st from 10:00 to 1:00 at Little Crane Parking Lot. See if you can bring your sensitive things down there and get them shredded. The wastewater plant, the city is currently looking for funding for its engineering for the outfall diffuser replacement. So, I believe it's been talked about a couple times before, but the outfall pipe that goes into Olakawak Creek that's physically in the water is in need of getting replaced. And so they're talking about 100,000, 116,000 worth of engineering costs just to engineer a new outfall. And then, of course, construction as well, maybe another half a million, plus the environmental studies and whatnot to actually work in the water should be pretty soon as well. So, it's a project on the horizon, trying to find some funding for that. Sooner we can get it going, the better. It was discussed at the beginning of the wastewater treatment plant program to do this work, but the environmental impacts that were taken, studies that were taken so long, it would have delayed the entire project. So they decided to break it to two back then, to get our plant done and then work on the outfall separate. Planting Committee, there's a vacancy. Mr. Mason Gall will be stepping down at the end of his term at the end of the month. So if there's anyone that's interested in the planting committee, please put them in touch with me or City Hall so that we could potentially get them on the committee.
There's also an application form online.
And May Day Festival, thank you to the May Day Committee volunteers. Turn of the great year, obviously, and most people down there and saw that, all the folks walking around town, so it's pretty exciting. Even though there was the threat of rain and then intermittent rain during the day, people still start running and had a good time, so. Good event. Council reports. Any members of the council have anything to report?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Ms. McIntosh.
I want to put on the agenda for next meeting about the jail.
Okay.
I have problems with the jail.
Any other council reports?
I'd like to bring up that the negativity, which is kind of common, the negativity on the Facebook regarding the project that we all went out of our way to come into a special meeting and to listen and approve, and I think we were all excited about because we all voted it in. And then, the builder had some issues without us being involved with it, and so he's not doing it. So, we all want the city to grow, and there's a lot of things going on, and stirring the pot doesn't help anybody. So, if you have any questions, call City Hall or ask one of us, but just getting on Facebook and saying that the city council doesn't want the city to grow is a bunch of not good stuff.
Malarkey.
Malarkey.
Who we. I was at who we too.
Whatever it is, it's disinformation. We don't want that.
Well, and it's true, you know, the council planning committee in the city can approve projects, but, you know, it's up to the developer when it finally is said and done whether it's something that they want to extend their finances on, right? It's their livelihood, so. Their call, not ours.
There's other people that, there's other property owners down there that can do stuff with their properties also, but we don't see anything down there being done.
It's because we're the leaders, and the leaders always get the short end of the stick.
Welcome.
Different seats to be in, for sure.
Other council reports? Hearing none. Agenda approval. I do have two additions to the agenda. First, council to consider resolution 05-2022, authorizing the purchase of real property. And then, second, council to consider awarding the contract for the Warden Park fencing project with express ironworks. Any other additions?
That's the fence?
The fencing.
That problem with the fence.
Okay, great, time to talk about it.
Okay, well, for one.
No, not me now, but when we get there.
Damn it.
Maybe next time. I'll make a motion that we approve this city council meeting agenda for May 12, 2022 with the additions of the two things the mayor just spoke.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda with two additions. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, Ms. Lovely, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Maybe.
Did yes or no?
No.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for April 28th, 2022.
Do a motion by Ms. Lovely to approve the meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
I'll say a second.
Second, Mr. Parsons, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I make the most motion to approve the vouchers for 1st of May at $59,570.79.
Do a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, Ms. Lovely, discussion.
Yeah.
Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Special reports to this county sheriff's department.
Good evening. The April law enforcement totals in Vator, during the month of April, there were a total of 390 citizen contacts, a total of 25 calls per service, four of which were when a dedicated deputy was in the we had 19 traffic stops with one infraction and one criminal citation. There were no custody warrants either of any owners. Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to city business. Item number one, executive session for RCW 4231101B, version regarding real estate matters. I'd like to excuse the city council to the back office for just a few minutes to discuss something before we re-adjourn this meeting. So I will
Can we, don't we do a motion to start the session?
We can absolutely, well, definitely, at the time. Sure, why not?
I'll make a motion to start the executive session at 6:11 or 6:12 for as long as is needed.
Do a motion by Ms. Lovely to excuse the executive session at 6:12 PM. Do we have a second?
I second.
Second, Ms. McIntosh, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We will be back momentarily.
This conference will now be recorded.
Reconvenienced meeting of the Vator City Council at 6:27 PM after the executive session. Moving on to city business, item number two, council to consider outsourcing city payroll services to a private company, resolution 062022. So this has been thrown around to the hall a little bit for a while now. As most of you know, City Hall handles its own payroll. So, city clerk, integrators, deputy clerk, they sit there, they go through payroll, calculate everyone's numbers, calculate taxes, file all the different state agencies, and on and on and on. And they spend quite a few hours a month working on doing those payroll services. We also have expenses related to the time clock that's on the wall out here that the city hall uses. You have an annual fee. Yeah, there's an annual fee associated with it. So, fifth of real cost would be the equipment as well as the hours that we pay our employees to do this. There are payroll service companies, private companies that do this. It's fairly standard for governments, for cities, and other government entities to outsource their payroll services. It frees up the City Hall employees to do what we want them to do, which is our government work versus spending hours every month working on payroll. The other advantage to payroll services is that every year there's an annual, the annual W2s for taxes are calculated though. This company would do it for us. This company also offers automatic deposits for our employees' paychecks. The city doesn't offer that right now. A variety of different options. And when it comes down to it, in your packet, I believe there's a table where Diane calculated in there, or was it just in the email? In the packet, where she calculated her monthly number of hours a month that that the deputy and the clerks put into calculating payroll, and then also the annual reviews as well. Versus outsourcing it to this particular company that we found, ADP, very big in the industry, at $146 a month for a new time clock and for their payroll services. You know, $146 a month does not pay for that many hours of our clerk's time.
Now, for the clerk's, is the seven hours monthly, is that already added in, or is that?
That's what we've been there. Already, we do seven hours.
Like I'm saying, you're getting still paid during the day, but you're just seven hours calculated.
Correct. Yeah, so it would increase our annual budget, right? Our expenses would go up the 100, almost $150 a month above what we're currently spending. But it's as if we're giving our employees another day.
Yeah, whole nine hours.
Yeah, another nine hours a month to do government work versus calculating payroll every month.
Does it have hardware that you install and you just input it, 30 minutes you're done, it does everything?
How about you answer that, Diane? How many?
Because I'm being advertised all the time.
Yeah.
Right. We do not have payroll talk. We have manual talk where I need a manual payroll that was put together by Jill, she did a great job doing it. That has a number of spreadsheets where you put in the time, and then that spreadsheet gives you the information that you put into the other spreadsheet, and then you take it from that spreadsheet, and you put it into this spreadsheet, and then you put it onto the main payroll spreadsheet individually by authority. Then you give your monthly total, a quarterly total, and then you take your monthly total and you pay the taxes, but then you have to have another spreadsheet that disperses it into, like, I get paid out of 70% comes from the crime club, 30% from sewer. 50% of hers comes from sewer, and 52% from. So everybody has a different breakdown. John gets 25%, 25%, and 50%. So you have to account for all that stuff. So every little thing, about the hardware, you buy one time fee, it's always there, you don't have to do all that hell of a thing with the spreadsheet, it does it for you. But you still have to pay your taxes, right? You still have to issue the W2s, and you still, you can't do the automatic deposit, all those things we've talked about.
And you pay the tax, when you say pay the taxes, there's different online sources that you go to do that?
And you have to calculate it.
Yeah, you pay IRS, you pay the department people, you pay medical people. Quarterly, we pay LNI, employment security, you pay family medical. And then annually, you have to account for everything, and you have to submit all your stuff to IRS and create those two.
And there's another one coming out here really soon. They added out, but then they canceled it.
Yes, and we were set up to just pay family medical.
Yeah.
We were set up, actually took it out in January, then they said, oh, you don't have to take it out, so.
I make a motion that we approve resolution number 06-2022.
Do a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution 062022. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Lovely.
I was gonna say, I have some comments about it too. Calculating all this out yesterday, I was asking questions to ADP. We can't get this without getting our time clock. We just basically use our same time clock up, and we do pull the hours off and submit it on their online format, and then they take it from there. And that would take the $90 a month off. So you'd be talking, you know, $70 a month for the process payroll. And also, one of those terms is to actually mail the W2s, and I'm like, they can send up the W2s here. They don't have to be officially mailed. It's great if they send them to IRS, or to all that stuff, but there are some things that we can massage around so that we're not paying as much here. You know, each piece, we can take on what we want.
So, what's the time clock cost us now?
Sorry, I don't have that number.
It seems like we just renewed the annual $300, yeah, I remember that too, the $300 number.
So we don't own that?
We, basically, we only, what we're paying for is the fourth.
So, we can keep that, not have the $1,091 expense, and are the other numbers still good?
Yeah.
And what about price increase?
Well, if you see here, it says that on this first year, they're giving us a $283 credit. That won't be in subsequent years. So, we're still looking at $70, $71 a month for the process.
But would they give it that, that without the time clock?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the best one?
Yeah.
Wait, I can tell you, when I was at Freightliner for 18 years, they had ADP, and it was excellent. I mean, that's for a long period. They are well-known and very cost-effective.
Cost is what I'm talking about.
Right. Be hard for these guys to compete with it. And it would free up more time for the other employees to do other projects.
Well, my friend.
Friends, yeah.
It's true. Without the, we can manually reserve the employee hours. And save over half of this cost. It'd be a very.
We talked about $800 a year, so, you know, $1,700. And that's the best offer they can give, seeing how we don't have that many people on there?
Yes.
Yeah, they calculated the number of employees that we had.
Right.
It is scalable, so if the city did get employees, it's something to be careful.
So is the proposal that you did, Mike, with the time clock or without?
What's that?
Are we gonna go for approval without the time clock?
We just. With the time clock. We can always take it off.
Or we could do it the other way around. You could approve it without the time clock if it becomes too too intense to, and put those hours, we could always add that package on later.
Yeah.
Could start low.
If we just paid for it, time clock, right?
Yeah, something like in March, I think, we said to do the contract again. And we're talking, if we start this, we're not gonna start till, like, July. So that we've already got a half a year done here completely, and we'll start the second half of then.
Makes sense.
Rescind your motion.
Oh, rescind my motion?
Yeah, because we're in a tangent.
All right, I rescind my motion and remotion for resolution 06-2022 with the removal of the time clock.
Do a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution 062022 for the payroll services only, not to include the time clock. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Second, Mr. Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution 062022, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries. Council to, moving on to item number three, council to consider casket industrial services contract for the City Hall and shop roofing resolution 07-2022. I made a mention of this at the mayor's report at the last meeting, that because of the odd weather, the roofing company that we, the contracted with, requested that we change the estimated completion date to the end of June, which this amendment does do. Why? Same contract, just a little longer so they can get it done, let's drive.
Pay for the lawyer.
Who paid for the lawyer?
To redo the contract. Why? They requested it, they should have paid for it. Why are we paying for it? We shouldn't have paid for it.
How much?
Didn't they tell us that we didn't even have to have the resolution, because they decided they were not gonna charge the money this year? And, so that was the only thing about the amendment, was adding that. Who are we talking about now?
Yeah, I have to talk to you.
The Cascade Industries, I think, on the, on the agenda, item number three. We have the.
Defense people.
No.
No, this is the city driver.
Okay. My question still stands.
Well, by default, we run all of our contracts by the, not quite all of them. Sometimes we have a contract, we can send it to MR, not MR, it's the RMSA.
RMSA.
RMSA, who is our insurance company, and they will review more simple things for free for us. And so on the more simple things, we do run them, run that by them, just a few dollars. On this one, didn't we ask the board to edit this one for us, or did we just do it ourselves?
No.
It was a date. I wasn't, I wasn't exactly sure. It's kind of standard procedure to have the attorney to make sure all the contracts are set up right.
They should at least pay half, if not all, because they requested it, we didn't.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 07-2022.
Do a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution number 072022. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second, Ms. Lovely. Does it make note of that?
Yeah.
And in the future, if a contractor asks for an extension or a change of contract, we can let them know that that would be, that would be on them to pay for. I know, we did that recently with the garbage franchise with Community of Wasteland Recycling. He asked for the contract that expires the end of this year to be updated with some changes that he required, and we let him know that he would have to pay for those, and.
Doesn't that, doesn't that have to go through a another resolution for us to?
It would have, it would have needed to do that.
We're going to ask people to?
And it would have had to have coattails and whatnot, because we're gonna raise utility rate rates. So we, so we let him know all that stuff, and as you can see, you have not seen an updated contract from him, so. But some noted. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution 072022 for the extension for the completion date on the City Hall roof and shop roof, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to resolution, council to consider resolution 052022 on the purchase of real property. So this will be for the purchase of old address, I believe, 0 Main Street in Vator, as there is no building there, 0. But it is block 56, lots 8 through 14. That is the legal description. The purchase price is $88,000. You've all seen the purchase sale agreement. It has not changed to the authorizing resolution. That would give the city the ability to begin testing the soil, to start escrow account in the amount of $3,500 for the seller. And we can start moving on this.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 05-2022.
A second.
Did you actually say it? Did you read the entire thing?
One that I picked, Joe, really? I know. Mike. I make a motion to approve resolution number 052022, resolution of the City Council of the City of Vator, authorizing the purchase of a certain parcel of real property, authorizing the mayor to execute the purchase and sale agreement, and implement this resolution, including authorizing the mayor to undertake due diligence, designate escrow agent, review title, deposit earnings money, and complete the purchase price for the property on block 56, lots 8 through 14.
Thank you.
And I second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. Further discussion?
It's a lot of money, still.
Yeah, it is, it is. You know, this will use the ARPA money, which is the money from the American Relief, American Relief, what's the piece in for protection? Protection Act? COVID relief money. Everyone got it, including the cities. The city, the Vader, got about $190,000 up to this point. I think we've spent nine, maybe $10,000 on the tractor. This money is designed for to give back to the community. It's designed for the community.
Okay.
And so that's what, what this property would be for.
We couldn't get grants for it and use the COVID money for, like, low-income families that are having problems with sewage or whatnot? Because I'm pretty sure they'd like to have. Cause I'm pretty sure they'd like to have monetary help more than they would a community center.
We just say, there is a new grant that is being offered to do that specifically. Even with the purchase price, we still have a hundred thousand dollars basically, ninety, maybe eighty thousand. That has not been spent, that can be designated for other things. So we're not using all of it, we're just using.
Right, but still, how how long is that gonna last, a lot of needy families here. You know, we can go through that.
Well, you you should put for the proposal for for that, there's still money there.
Right, and also there is a requirement with that, that if you give assistance to people paying their bills, they have to prove they were affected by COVID. Did they lose a job, did they whatever, it can't just be somebody that goes, I'm not paying my bill, and then we give them money to pay it.
Well, I know that, I'm saying, a lot of them, I'm pretty sure they come up with proof.
So, I mean, and we can do that. We offered that last year, or twenty twenty, and I think we had two people that filled out paperwork that we were able to have.
I never heard anything about it, so that's why you haven't had two. We need better, better advertisements.
And then we did the um little little.
Little false loot.
Little false loot with the with the care's money that we got originally, so that everybody in the town benefits, businesses and employees. I mean, citizens, thank you.
Further discussion, comments? Very none, all those in favor of approving resolution zero five dash twenty twenty two, the operating, the purchase of blocks fifty six, lots eight through fourteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Moving on to the last item, business company considered awarding the contract for the Warden Park fencing project to Express Iron Works. Uh, also in the packet are the is the agenda bill that discusses the bid process, the amount of bids we receive, and all of the bids received, um to be for the four-foot tall um black vinyl coated chain link fence, three hundred eighty-five feet long, including the twelve foot vehicle maintenance gate in the back of the park. The received six bids, um the lowest bid was from Express Iron Works um for fifteen thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ten cents, which includes tax. See the little materials matches what the other companies were also offering. Pretty local company had a map line. Um, this, these funds, the two-thirds, roughly a little over two-thirds, I believe, is paid for out of the RCO grant that we got for Warden Park, and the other one-third of cost um is coming from refunds that the City Council originally approved. Wow.
Seventy-five percent.
So it's twenty-five percent, so seventy-five percent comes from grant funds, twenty-five percent comes from the city refunds. And this is the, this is um the safety fence that goes around the back, this will keep the children from running into the alley, into the side street.
Can I speak now?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I make.
I have some things to say, my first one.
Okay.
The, you actually need a better set of plans, if you can read the damn thing. But the fence, I thought was supposed to be surrounded the playground, the whole thing, to keep the little ones from getting out in the streets, in the front of it.
It does, well, it goes, it goes, so on the far north side of the park, there's a wooden fence there already. This fence would go north to south, from the wooden fence, all the way behind where the old swing set was, behind the basketball court, behind the playground, all the way along the alley, and then turn and go to the east towards the current parking lot.
And that's where it is.
So, yeah, so it would frame, it would frame the whole park in, so the only place that um you could leave the park is from the front. And so the idea is that, you know, if you have, your your parents were there, or something like that, um they'd be sitting there in on the picnic tables up front, if any kids were gonna leave, they'd have to go past you to leave the park.
I think we need uh another one on the front, because there was nothing but dog poop all in that park, and they were bringing the dogs there for the little kiddies to play in.
I've heard a couple times, yeah, that there's been some waste there from animals.
When you get one, hook that.
That's one safe game.
Yeah.
There, there is, yeah, there is one there, it was taken down during construction, an animal waste pickup station, um it was taken down, we need to put it back up.
And the dogs, because it's a health hazard for the children, because they could get worms.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we could definitely add some signage that.
No dog food ware or something.
This is not a dog, dog park.
Right. But I still think the the, we need something in the front that that encloses it in for more of a safety reason, and to keep the animals out.
Yeah, that's, that would definitely, definitely, that wasn't in the in the original design, I can see the value of that. Not sure how functional that'll be, I mean.
Just have a date.
If you kept the kept that design where fence in the back of the park, and then you added, somehow you segregated the playground separate. I don't know.
And you put it.
It's a whole other, that's a whole other.
Where the basketball court is, and then bring it on down where you put it off at, that would be perfect.
Yeah, we could do that. Wonder if it'd be cost effective. Prove this and then do a amendment.
Just so we.
Add it on. We have a, we have a a comment from the chairman of the park board and president, playground expert.
So originally, we did talk about putting some fencing up in there, because there was also, at the time, when we were designing the project and going through the grants and everything, there was a funding issue, even just with that much more, I knew it doesn't seem like it's that much more right along the front, but um it has been, it was in our notes and everything too, to keep an eye on that once it was done. And the need, which, you know, there we knew that there could be a potential to be, for that to go across and add like a really nice entry weight in the so that it can get off at the end of the day. Um, that would be another project that we definitely can raise, well, we've already been raising some funds and stuff too, and so that is something that has been on my personal radar to keep going on as well.
Yeah, because we're we're liable.
Yeah.
And I'm just could see some kid run out there and they get run over, or bringing a dog in and they get bit.
Well, when, well, in the dog part, definitely, I think, I have to relook at our sign again, this was something else I was looking at, because we had, after we took down our dog bag, I know we have the big park pool sign that's on the bathroom.
Right.
And I know that I definitely wanted to bring something on to that side, because most people are entering on that side, and they don't really see that sign unless they walk to the bathrooms.
Right.
So it's really good to make sure we have that coverage, and um that is something, because we do, we still have signs that we need to purchase, we sell in the garbage cans we need to purchase. Um, so a sign about dogs being unleashed, not in the play area, I didn't think about saying not in the play area on it.
You have to.
But we, yeah, I I've learned, I'll say what I've learned later.
You have to be direct.
Yeah, it, you have to be very, very specific, and it's really frustrating, because you think there's some common sense at some point.
I don't know where you can lay the man, Roy.
But that'll be the highest version of what I was gonna say, so um, but yeah, I haven't forgotten all the high points, so I've been thinking about that. I mean, keeping an eye, I had noticed my son and I had cleaned up some dog poo in there as well, and I've let you know too, so he's to make an appointment to look to make sure, it seems like it's always happening in certain spots, and I don't know if it's either a specific person who's bringing it in, or if there's a dog that's getting out all the time.
We have dogs on the under.
Yeah, there's dogs that wander the 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 streets, and and uh some of them are not very nice dogs, that's another reason why I was commenting about the fence.
So and something too that I would like to do, if we end up adding that fence along the area, I mean, there really isn't a good way to it takes some creative thinking for along the pavilion section to really have a truly enclosed park, probably. However, um I would like it to be more than just another fence that's put up with gates, I would like it to actually look like an official entrance, something that would really.
Like an archway or something.
Yeah.
So, um, like I said, it's a great idea, and it's good to make sure that we know that, and it's definitely not something that's going to be brought up too, so.
Well, I.
For the amount they're charging, we should just throw that in.
You would think, you would think.
I actually went through, I thought, for these prices, like, you know, what could we, what would it, what does it really cost to build this thing? You know, and I went to some of the home improvement store websites, and I started pricing the chain link fence, and then two hundred posts, and the concrete, and the caps, and all this stuff, and it was, it was ten thousand dollars. You know, it's like, okay, well, it's ten thousand dollars worth of parts, and then the rest of this is labor, it's not too bad.
Well, it means that we don't have.
Yeah.
The item have to do with this.
I was just gonna comment, ask uh for volunteers to make maybe like a a little, a wooden barrier in the front.
I think maybe that would be enough to. A temporary fence until you have what you want.
Yeah. Yes, ask for donations for with material too.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I know folks are willing to donate material and labor. And we now even have, after May Day, we have our little donation jar that's up here for the parts specifically to do. And we're doing the hundred, the books, I still have to stop, like twenty books that are for sale. Always donations, but you can even get online if someone wants to, and they can pay for a donation online for parts also, so there's lots of options.
We also have um free money that can be designated for that, since it is a capital improvement.
My preference definitely would be to to approve the this part of the fence project, get this up there, that that would keep them from the going to the back and the side road for now, and then um we could definitely look at adding on that other section, somehow figuring out a design where the playground itself, you know, the chip area is protected from animals.
Right.
I'll make the motion that we award the contract for the Warden Park fencing project to Express Iron Works.
Remotion by Mr. Parsons to approve contract awarding to Express Iron Works, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, this lovely discussion. Right, hearing that, all those in favor of approving express iron works as the fencing contractors, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, that's in the city business, public comment.
Can I answer the question, okay?
Oh, yeah, 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 I I just was was looking at, I always think outside the box.
Well, and.
But you're trying to make a box, you know, when you're.
Sorry.
When you're sitting down, you're designing.
You can tell he's dead.
When you sit down, you design this, you try to think of everything.
Right.
But then someone throws a dog at it, and you're like, I didn't think about dogs.
Yeah.
So you're kind of.
A no dog sign would be good for the park.
So it takes some observations to this, I don't find two in a project.
Is there cameras on that thing up there?
Camera, with John's wife.
Uh, Kelly Shai, six twenty ninth street, and I am here to, as a Lions Club representative, to just remind everybody, Wednesday, May twenty ninth, we have the circus coming onto the school property. I'm sorry, I said twenty ninth. Yeah, May twenty fifth, Wednesday, May twenty fifth, we have two time, uh two showtimes, one at five, one at seven thirty, it's first come, first served. And it's supposed to be really awesome, the help, uh if we know that we're gonna have a group that would like to see the big top come up and go up and have a tour and meet the animals and everything, I, you let me know, and I'm coordinating with other schools and everything right now to see if there's interest for them to come as well, and at nine thirty, you can show up and they'll have a group, give a group tour. Um, the the morning of, sorry, yes, the morning of the twenty fifth, not the. It says at four P M. they open up, and the pony rides, moonbound, giant slide face painting, they have concession stands and T-shirts, and the box office will open. And then the shows are, like I said, five, five and seven thirty, the tickets are seven dollars for children ages two to twelve, and seniors sixty-five and up. And otherwise, everybody else is twelve dollars, and the um percentage, the the funds that we're raising from it, it goes to the Vader Lions Club, and most of you already all know that we do the Thanksgiving and Christmas food baskets, and and we do harvest festivals and everything, and the Easter iconic and stuff too, so that's that's stuff that helps us pay to do that and try to have as many free things as we can as well.
Twelve, twelve dollars is the advance purchase price.
Yes, it is the advantage purchase price on the day up, if you don't buy your tickets until you show up that day, it goes up. The adult tickets will be fifteen dollars, and the child senior tickets will be eight dollars, so it's two dollars more for the adults and one dollar more for the children and seniors, and we also had some very generous community members who also paid for all twenty-two kids to get a free ticket to go to the circus at the preschool, so we had ten over at Summit Sheds, and then we had uh compliments, seeing a little lady helping to shove, uh getting the remaining eight children covered as well, so, thank you.
No, I'm just guessing, because you're talking about um the cost for the pony rides, the all the other stuff is separate from the entrance.
Yes, so anything else outside of the tickets, which the ticket only covers the big top, my understanding, everything else is kind of like.
Need a.
A carnival, yeah. And I don't remember it's some, some of like, there was something about cash, I don't, I think you needed to make sure you.
Was it cash only?
I I don't know if it was cash only, it sounded sounded like there was a couple of spots, like maybe T-shirts you might be able to buy with the card, maybe, but I would just plan on being having cash just in case, so.
That's a great uh great fundraiser for the Lions Club, and like you're saying, Lions Club is a lot of free free activities and giveaways for the community during the holidays and throughout the year, and it also supported the support of the parks over the years. So anything that we can do to help the Lions Club comes right back and helps the city and 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 the citizens here.
And I also have a coupon here too, one per household, dollar off the free pony rides, I also have coloring sheets, so if kids want to color it and bring it into pony rides, it's them, a dollar off their pony ride as well, I don't know, it says something about a contest, but I don't know what the contest entails yet, I haven't gotten that far in the workbook. But, and our tickets are for sale at Little Train, J and G's grocery, it says Lions Club, but it also needs, it was supposed to say uh here in City Hall, and uh Frank's Bar in Winlock and Cedar Village, I G A, Winlock.
Does the Lions Club have a place for donations, like City Hall or the.
Uh, officially, no, but we can, or you can.
I don't want to donate money by my jar.
Yeah, if that's okay.
A second jar would be a better idea.
Yeah, we can set something better up.
Maybe we talked to Jason about putting one in the store.
I'll knock on my door and I will bring you over to Anita, Anita's also another place too, at my edge, Little Train, so between you and the two of us. Um, and then we'll set work on setting up something here at City Hall, so we can save some of the place.
I know they do a jar around Christmas for all the toys and stuff, for sure.
Yeah.
Cause that usually helps.
And and I I see a finger tapping, so I just want to thank everybody. Did I override, I didn't want to go over my three minutes, so.
So, all right, elected official comments?
Yeah, um, I just, one thing I wanted to add, so to share up from you, so I did talk to the fellow who reported the stolen gas, he doesn't really have it on the camera, he's saying, he doesn't want any repercussions from whoever was doing it. He didn't, he really doesn't know who did it, he said that because he's kind of paranoid. But that was on ninth and E, I believe, is where the gas was stolen, so.
But we all.
Yeah, I talked to the fellow, and. Yeah, I talked to the fellow, and there is no camera. He doesn't know who did it. He made, he made it up, made that part of it up, as he didn't want anybody coming after him, whoever was doing it.
We, uh, we also had Rick, um, Rick Cruz's boat got stolen out of his driveway Monday night, or Monday afternoon around five o'clock, and Monday night, the Kelsel PD called him, because they got stuck towing it or something, so he got his boat back, but, um, they took it right out of his driveway.
Did he catch the guy, did he catch the people who did it?
No.
No.
And he lives, uh, straight across the street from me.
Well, I, I know the gas thing's been going on for some time. It happened to us.
And it's a bright red boat too.
Yeah. The gas thing's been an ongoing issue, so there is somebody around here that's been hitting gas when they, when, what they do is they see something, unlock tank, it's easily accessible. That's what happened to me. I had my pickup for parts a certain way facing the road, so they saw, oh, that's a pickup. They didn't have a, uh, one of those release caps, so they just came in, helped themselves, left, left the cap off, just like what happened to the fellow over there. So it's somebody that sees it as a matter of opportunity. I mean, since I put the locking cap on, I haven't had any trouble, because I parked, parked the vehicle a different way. But be aware, there is somebody around town.
It seems like whenever gas prices go up.
Yeah.
It, it triggers that.
It goes up, yeah.
Folks probably can't afford their own, and so.
I went and filled all my gas cans for my lawnmower for the next month or two, and had to hire an armored truck to take it home for me. I just couldn't do it myself.
Didn't feel safe, especially as a council member, you know, it's a big old flag.
Any other elected official comment?
Yeah, I had to, just to give you a question here. Is there a way to, like, make an ordinance or something, that if you get somebody with their dog over there?
Uh, we could have a, even at the park?
Yes.
Yeah, we could, um, but the park board definitely could make a policy, and the council, the council could make a policy, you know, no dogs in the playground or something like that.
They also have a dog leash on it already, that would have to be on leash.
Yeah, but no dogs in the actual playground.
Yeah, it's the dual.
There's a dog hater.
I have that, they can think twice.
Poop haters, yeah. And don't blame the dog, it's the owner.
Yeah.
Pick up your poop.
I.
My dog poops, and unfortunately, yeah, pick it up.
It's a nice soft space, right?
I know, like a little cat box. That's what I'd be more worried about.
Yeah, the cats are a whole different issue.
Just having a sign.
Dog doesn't read the sign.
Apparently the owners won't either.
Any other elected official comment? All right, are you done? Meeting is adjourned at seven oh nine P M.